We need to honor it, eight oh two. Do a road call.
Sharon Sanger, alternate.
Bob Gilbert, member.
Terry Wake, member.
Ray Kachaski, member.
Cindy Picos, member. Wendy Ruff, give her alternate, alternate number.
Harry Nortowitz, alternate.
Bill Larson, ex officio.
Windows are being, I should see.
I'm going to be leaving, Olivia.
Please sing it here, please. I guess Wendy. Let's see. Review and acceptance of the minutes of November twentieth, twenty fourteen. Can anybody pick up those copies?
Oh, the copies are right there on the table. But they were all emailed to everybody.
Just waiting for Terry to find them.
I already got half of them. Finish it.
This is the nineteenth, right?
Nineteenth, I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned.
You want a simple page?
It's double sided.
Yes.
Oh, yours. How sometimes it...
Pretty good.
I like it better.
Yeah.
More commas if needed.
Any comments?
Yeah.
Of November nineteenth.
Nineteen.
Yeah.
Okay. Have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes of November nineteenth.
A second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now the minutes of December eleventh.
Line seventy-three, there should be an F on the deal.
You're right.
Line seventy-three. I love these lines, thank you Sharon. Makes it so much easier.
Me too.
Line sixty-three. I'm not sure if I'm understanding it right, but shouldn't it be a minimum of twelve units per acre?
Yeah. Yeah.
Not maximum?
Nope.
Yeah.
I'm looking at line one hundred and four. And if his comments from Bill Cantland and Waterville Company were not in favor of this overlay zone.
Yeah, what's the section he was looking for?
I don't remember. I thought he was.
In the discussion...
In the discussion?
We had talked about different possibilities for the overlay zone. He may have been referring to one of the possibilities where the overlay zone was suggested to end at Nelson's path. He wanted the overlay zone to include all the way out to the road, but he was certainly in favor of that.
That's what I thought. So maybe this should say, uh, the overlay zone to Nelson's path.
Well, he needs to specify, he was not in favor of shortening the overlay zone to be just to Nelson's path.
So I guess we should add that, sure. Restricting it to Nelson's path.
Right, I mean if you want to keep that comment in, he was not in favor of restricting the overlay zone to Nelson's path.
Okay. Any other comments?
People must have heat.
Yeah.
Everybody's here.
We have an audience. Any other comments on your December eleventh? Do we have a motion?
Make the motion that we accept it, as many as...
Second.
Yeah, second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, public hearing. We're going to open a public hearing for the zoning changes. First thing we're going to do is the signs.
I have a short one. Yeah, I do, thank you.
What, a short one, you got one?
No.
There you go.
Thanks.
Everybody got one? Uh, this is some extra copies. Sharon went ahead and made all the changes for the ones that we approved last meeting. But we still have three that we're going to discuss this time. We've made some changes and carried them forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I incorporated them all into this one for...
Um, I remember one of them, uh, let me see if I can find it.
I can find it right here.
One was the deletion certainly of the language regarding political advertising. And not political, but, um, general comment, you know.
Freedom of expression.
Statements of, you know, personal expression. So that was deleted. So that was one of the changes, right? But there was no... The other has, I think, had to do with the changes around contractor signs. So we need to find that one.
Are we going to leave that alone?
Would this help you if I gave you this?
Uh, no.
Okay.
What would help is if I could, oh, it's new development signs.
It's on the second sheet, second one down.
I think we basically are going to leave that alone.
Right, we're going to actually...
Right, so we were back to not changing the language in there so that it did include the telephone number and the name of the real estate developer. But there was something else they wanted that we didn't do, right?
On the developer signs?
Yeah.
I thought we just went back to original...
Oh, we did. We went back to the original language and on the whole thing.
The original language included that for one year? Was that the sign?
It went, yeah, like back.
I think it was one, one.
Well, until the first unit is sold.
No, I thought we were changing that until...
Well, there was discussion, but I thought it was left alone at one year, no?
No, we weren't going to change the...
We weren't going to change it at all.
Also, we went, we left both sections the same. So if you look at the new development signs on page two at the top, it now reads, "A new development sign may be erected from the approval of the project and maintained until the issuing of an occupancy permit." That's the only change we made.
Okay.
And that's just a language change.
Yeah.
It doesn't change the meaning. So all, the whole section on new development signs essentially stays the same.
Same.
And those must be the changes.
There was one, there was one, and just before that, you removed promote and replaced it with identify.
Right. And I believe on open house signs, um, we changed it to, it says, basically that open house signs are allowed on the property. When we originally restricted it to one, and now it could be multiple. So as long as it's on your property, you know, this is like in a condo, in a condo development, you can put up four signs in a condo development. You're still limited to two off premises pointing to the condo development. And those might, and I, other than that, I don't think, I think everything's the same.
That was one of the changes that is...
Right.
Let's see, we changed it to...
Can I mention something at any time?
To, uh, to Mr. Rich.
I don't know how to do it, so, can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm with you, I'm sorry. I just want it to stay calibrated here.
Sure.
Chip, could you identify yourself for that?
Uh, Chip Roper, Roper Real Estate. I think when we originally talked, actually it was a meeting with Mark DiCotto many years ago, about, um, open house signs and, you know, the quantity. I think there's actually language in the zoning ordinance now, basically stating that we have to use the minimum amount of signs because we discussed, um, you know, like if there's a, somebody that's trying to sell their property on West Branch Road, how do you get people from Town Square to West Branch Road? So, I mean, there was language in there already, and I think two signs are, I don't think that that's enough. I mean, to get somebody down to West Branch from where people are in Town Square, I mean, that basically puts you to the end of Stone Tower Lane or right there at the Academy. That's my comment.
Because there's only three of these that we're going to discuss today, because the others we approved last meeting. This is water, so...
Approved. I, 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 I think what we have to do is recommend issuing this to the, I don't know. What's the, what's the next step, Mark?
Next step is move, you decide the language that you want, and then it gets moved forward to the warrant.
It's going to be, so we need to vote to move the whole thing to the warrant?
No, we, we, we moved.
You voted some of them.
We moved some of the last...
Oh, we did? Oh, okay.
So there's only three of them that we're really talking about now. And that's one of them, the open house signs.
Right. And new development signs must have been the other one, you know, must have been the other one. And the third one is the deletion of the...
The third one's a temporary sign.
Right.
Temporary signs.
Temporary signs.
For special events.
New development and...
Well, here it is in minutes, so section...
Right.
I'm picking.
Three eighty-nine, we moved. Three, three, three eighty-nine.
That's the expression. That wasn't proposed, so it was not in the...
That was the freedom of expression.
That was the freedom of expression.
We removed, okay.
I think the open house one was moved.
Yes, yeah, it was moved. Okay. Sorry, that one was moved last, last month. I was mistaken here.
To that's point, I actually came to the meeting at eight PM last month to discuss this. And found this place very dark.
How'd you make out?
Nobody was really discussing.
But nobody objected to your comment.
Mike Garrentz and Boulder Cottrell. I'd like to agree with Chip on the open house sign thing. I think two signs is an arbitrary number, and I think as long as things are done in an orderly, not over the top manner, I think we're fine. I think we self-police it. We can self-police this and get through with it. Because a question would be with two signs, what if you have multiple open houses on a day?
Well, I think it implies per property, I don't think.
But it's just, I think it's an arbitrary number, and I don't think we need it. And I have a question on new development signs, three, five, eleven, four, six dash four. Issuance of an occupancy permit by the code enforcement officer or completion of the subdivider improvement agreement. Could someone tell me what the subdivider improvement agreement is? And at what point does that kick in?
Twenty-three, three, four. Okay. That's the... Yeah.
Mark has this one.
I'm still, I'm sorry.
Mark.
Mark.
Subdivider improvement agreement is between, when a subdivision is approved, it is between the developer and the town, usually completed by the town manager. And it lays out how the construction of the subdivision improvements are going to be made, specifically the roads, the water lines, sewer lines, and other drainage and all of that. And then a bond is posted for the cost of the improvements. And the subdivider improvement agreement is just, just formalizes how that's going to happen.
All right, back to my question. My question is, does this mean that at the first occupancy permit, the sign has to come down? Or is it available to be there to help market this? And do we want to work with developers to market their property? Or do we want to put this restriction on it? Is, I think if we have, the sign have to be removed in a multiple dwelling facility, we're talking about a density of twelve units. And a sign has to come down after the first occupancy unit is done. It is detrimental to development. And if we're going to encourage this kind of development, I think we want to work towards the developers. And when it says here that the sign permit must be renewed annually, I think that gives us a point of reference where the developer and the planning board and the Board of Selectmen have a discussion if the sign is up for a longer time than needed.
This is a requirement that's been on books for...
And that's why we're looking to change this.
Twenty years or so.
I understand.
It doesn't seem to have been a problem before.
I think it wasn't a problem because it wasn't understood and wasn't enforced.
Do you have examples where it wasn't enforced?
Well, I think we're dealing with Green Peak. We didn't know it really existed until it became a problem.
So that...
I wasn't here for the development of the other big condo associations.
Thought we decided that we weren't going to change the language this, this time around, right? That we would look at it further next year. But for this round, I thought we weren't going to change because it was comments from the audience last week, or last month, rather. About the...
That's what we said.
One of the issues that we wanted more time on.
Right, this is one of the issues we wanted more time on. So we're not proposing any changes for March.
I understand. I'm just looking at the new language. I'm seeing new language as opposed to no changes. So that's why I'm asking my question.
New language?
They just removed the first and replaced it with an "and."
I don't, we believe it as the first. I think that's an issue. Well, instead of being removed, it was a one-word change. Where...
No, I think we're back to the discussion we were before, which is, it needs to be changed.
Does it need to be changed?
Well, that's the comment. I think it's suggesting it should be changed. Right.
And I apologize, I missed last month's meeting, but from what I remember that we discussed before, the crux of the issue that we heard from other property owners trying to sell their properties that weren't developments or that they felt it was giving new developments an advantage over people trying to sell their existing properties. That was the crux of what we're hearing before.
Right, it is a separate class of property. A new development is a legitimate new development where someone trying to resell their property is completely different.
I think it's something that could be considered, but I think we're trying to get this language to the...
Right, we're trying to get it to March, and this is a very complicated subject, and we didn't think we could resolve it last, last meeting. And we would look into it for next year.
It's a deadline, to get the language into this year.
Yeah, you're right. That's what we decided last time.
Yeah. So I think this is something we're going to look into.
I understand, the reason, the only reason I brought it up is I saw on a column of just a new, I don't have the statue in front of me to read it, so I just read it.
Oh, the existing statue is the column on the left.
Yeah. I'm reading the column on the right, all right.
This is what's there. This is what it's going to be.
I'm going to make a motion that we move these proposed changes to the ordinance to... What do we have to move to, Mark? To a warrant.
To the warrant.
To the warrant, yeah.
Okay, you have a second? All in favor?
Well, we should, again, open it up, discussion.
Okay, open up discussion.
You're talking about that wording as it is on this sheet?
Yeah.
Things that are...
Sheet should move them to a warrant, right.
This is all the changes we discussed last year.
This is the full set of changes we're proposing.
Right.
Does that include open house signs as well?
Yes.
Yeah, let's talk about the open house signs. And it may not be absolutely clear here, but also realize that the sign, that the language says open house signs are allowed on property, and two off premise directional signs are allowed as long as they conform to directional sign requirements. One of the directional sign requirements now is they can only be at arterial road intersections. All right? So, and, and so where town road intersections are the only place you could put these signs. And your question is whether two is enough. So, in your case, let's suppose there's a property over on River Road. You could put a sign at the intersection of River Road and West Branch, and then you could put one at the coming back up West Branch at the library. That would be two.
But if somebody's in town, so, I mean, nobody would know that you're down there. Like, if you're trying to sell your house and you wanted one of the real estate...
Yeah, but let me, let me just pose the question. To some extent, isn't that a problem? That assumes somebody starts in Town Square. Suppose they start at your office. Does that mean that any place they might start from, at every arterial road intersection, we ought to put a, allow a sign up?
No, I never said that.
Well, I know, but I'm just posing the question.
Right, when we had this original meeting, I think Mark was there, I can't remember who from Mark, I think maybe Jeff Brown was there, and Tom Hoyt. We had discussed five signs as like the number. You remember that meeting? I mean, it was like two thousand and six, I think. But we all kind of agreed that, you know, to get people from A to B, five signs is more than adequate.
What have you been normally putting out as a general rule? I mean, when you go out and set up signs for an open house, is it normally two or five or how many?
I'd say it's usually, you know, to get people to like a condo development, it's usually about five.
Of which two would be in the condo development and three would be outside?
More or less, it depends. I mean, you know, to get somebody in Windsor Hill, you know, it could take a lot more than that because there's a lot of walkways and...
Yeah, but that's in the development, so it doesn't count.
Yeah, I understand that. But like to get people like from, as an example, Town Square, walk out of Town Square, one, two, three, fourth, to get the development work.
But rather than Town Square, what if you took the loop? What if you just said to get somebody from the loop? If you added one more sign to the scenario that Bill had, that would get the person out to the farthest point in town, I think, which is, would be on River Road, right?
Right.
Wouldn't three in that particular case work? Is it necessary to go right from Town Square? Or do you think it's adequate if somebody driving the loop would pick up one of those signs?
Have we had a problem with people complaining of too many open house signs? Is that why we're dealing with this? Is there a problem that we are missing, or is...
I don't think we've heard as a board. I think the select people would have heard more than we, or the town.
I don't want to speak on both sides of this, but Marvin, have you heard anything complaints about open house signs?
No.
Then why not leave it the way it is? They're allowed on a temporary basis to advertise properties open for marketing purposes and actively staffed by a sales agent.
And there's also language in there that says the minimum amount of signs are to be used. It's not listed here, but I remember we read it.
Why are we reinventing the wheel and creating a burden that doesn't need to be created?
Not changing it.
Right. I've got a question, I guess, for the real estate people. If there were seven properties being listed at one period of time, a weekend, or whatever, are we looking at this as we have property A and we need a certain number of signs, whatever that number is, depending on the geographical location, to get them from point A to point B, to that particular property? Do the signs... I see the open house signs, I don't, I guess, maybe read them, I don't know. But does, would I have to follow those particular two, three, or five signs to get to the Windsor Hill condo that you're advertising?
Yeah.
As opposed to, well, going down the same road, I may see three or four different signs for different properties, which could encompass three or four signs as well.
You wouldn't see multiple direction signs from the same firm pointing in the same area. You would have, if I'm wrong on this, let me know. You'd see a sign from Roper or Waterville or Hoyt at, over by the golf course, pointing, heading down towards the north end of town. Then you'd probably see one at the corner of the golf course road, heading down from each of the firms. You wouldn't see two from Waterville if we had two houses there, or two from Roper if you had two houses there. Or you would see the different signs would be at the entrances to the condo association or in front of the property. There'd be no need for the redundancy, and I don't, I don't think we, any of us have enough signs to create.
No, and we typically only do one open house at a time.
Yeah. It's a matter of getting people to these places.
I don't think there's been an issue because it's actively staffed. And most of the places are only holding one open house at a time. So maybe Saturday and Sunday, they're different places, but, but it's still just one place per day. Per, or two places per day.
There's not enough signs.
There's not an abundance of Realtors in town.
Right. And actually, I mean, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, I find that when we do these open houses, it's almost like a... it's almost like a moving concierge desk for the valley. 'Cause I mean, people don't know that there's an elementary school here and that there's a, that this is an actual town. And, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've given people directions while I'm putting out signs, you know. So I think it's a really neat facet to the town, and nobody's complaining about it. I mean, why, like Mike said, why reinvent?
Well, I think these changes, I thought these changes would clarify issues that the selectmen had. Well, if they, if the select people wanna change, they've gotta get it to the county.
No, I think, I think, see, this was again the comment about the peripheral, about the proliferation of off-premise directional signs, of which this is just one type.
One type.
You know, that we seen there had been a number of comments. I think people that, particularly on the road coming in, everybody wants a sign pointing, you know, going someplace. And it's attempt, and it's an attempt on the off-directional signs to minimize the number of off-directional signs. Is it in response to specific complaints? It it, there have been people complaining about that our signage in general, directional signs, looks crappy. And I mean, I think that that's what this is in response to. Now, is it three, is it four, I mean, I I don't know. But the key to me is, it's not the number, it's you can't put them anyplace other than where you have arterial road intersections, period. And that and that should be, you know, and I kinda agree with Terry. I mean, if you got one on the Ring Road, from there, that oughta be enough. You don't need one at every arterial intersection pointing there's an open house someplace. I think that's where that's where the whole list comes from.
Okay.
I personally can't conceive of anybody buying a property on River Road or West Branch that couldn't find their way to someplace even without signs, frankly. Anybody that's gonna do that?
I can see the limitation that used as an example, though, for River Road.
Three.
The, yeah, three, I I think, I think you do need three in that particular case. I think to have, to expect somebody to be driving, I mean, it's not like somebody comes into town and says, "Well, let's go for the open house signs." It's something that, when they're driving, they they pick it up, it's not necessarily when they're walking.
Right.
That loop road is so central to everything, you know, that maybe if we changed it to three, I don't know, Chip, if you think that would be...
Yeah, I, I mean, just to, just to your point, though.
We moved this, we moved this last last meeting. So if we're gonna continue talking about it, I think we have to reconsider it. We have to, somebody's gotta put it up for reconsideration from the board. Because according to the minutes, we we moved this last last month.
Well, um...
If if I'm doing, if I'm reading this correctly, this is a done deal. Now, Mark, I think we can reconsider, right, within thirty days.
You're you're fine.
So what do we have to do, make a motion to reconsider?
Yeah.
To to reconsider your decision on open house signs, you can make a decision.
Alright, I'll make a motion to reconsider our decision on open house signs. Now, we've got an motion already on the floor, I mean, can can we have another? I guess we can have a second motion, right?
Yeah, well, you could, you could amend it.
We gotta vote, vote to take it back, just, you got a motion to take it back. Could somebody second it?
Yeah, we'll second it.
Who will second it?
I didn't get the second, but...
Oh, this one, right now, I'll second this one, but just as much the previous one that's on...
You can with, you can withdraw the motion, can't you, even after it's been accepted, uh, seconded?
The previous motion to move this on the board.
We had a motion on the floor to to move this on forward.
Oh, yeah, yeah, withdraw that, yeah, withdraw that.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to withdraw the first motion.
Second, I guess.
Well, you have to go along with that, I guess.
I'll go along with it.
Okay.
Did I second it?
Yes. You think people don't pay attention? Okay, now, Bill, you can make the motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider the section on open house signs.
Okay, will you second it? Okay, who seconded?
Oh, Wendy.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, now we're open again, here we go. We start fresh, the number of signs.
The number of signs. Well, just to, I guess, to Terry's point, three, like the the River Road example, people do look out for our signs. I mean, I have, it's more of a, you know, where where are the open signs or open houses at? And if you're on, I guess, the Town Square side going towards Windsor Hill and leaving towards the mountain to and from, you wouldn't know that there's an open house at River Road if you were at Noon Peak, if you were at Windsor Hill, if you were at Tyler Springs, Mountain Brook, Matt, you know, if if you don't go that way, if you're just going to the mountain, there's no way that you would know that there's an open house on River Road. That's my only comment to that.
I have a question that that doesn't, not part of the discussion of getting somebody from a certain place to where you want them to go, the individual open house, but ju- just as a curiosity, do people that come here to go skiing or whatever, come into town, or whether it's townspeople, I mean, is there like a percentage of people that show up at the open house that are like, I guess, I don't know what you, what you call it in the industry, but off the street as opposed to shopping, I'm gonna go look at some property, or I think I might, let's, let me stop into one of the offices and take a look at what's available, or some of the sheets that you find somewhere displayed? I'm I'm just curious. Doesn't have anything to do with the getting them to point A to point B, but it's just a...
I've never really looked at it. I mean, it's, you know, more a matter of they come in, we talk, we look around, you know. And and I'll be honest, a lot of it is the nosy neighbor, you know? A lot of people in the development, oh, you know, so and so is selling, and, you know, they look at, get ideas on, you know, how to set up their place. You know, it there's, it's a lot of that as well. It's not necessarily, and, you know, a lot of people are a little intimidated to go in a real estate office, to be honest with you. You know, they don't wanna be sold something.
Bob Wiles of Boat Builders, at Green Peak, we had a tremendous amount of people on Saturday and Sunday that were just down at Town Square, saw our open house, came in, and were not in the market to purchase a home or condominium that I've continued to have discussion with over time, that maybe a year, two years, three years, might be interested in coming into the town. I don't have a percentage of people, but I can tell you that it's a pretty high number. Now, Green Peak was, you know, it's in a unique location where people are driving the loop. And we had open houses there every weekend. If, on page forty-four of the ordinance, at the very top, paragraph three, five, eleven, four, seven, five, the last sentence does say, "A minimum number of signs will be used for each event." And I don't think that that has ever come up in your discussions when we place the number on it. So if you continue to move forward with a set number, then we should strike, unless you want that to be the maximum number and a minimum number be used in every case. You see what I mean? It's kind of redundant on one hand, but if you still want, like, if you can do it with two signs, do it with two signs, even if the maximum is gonna be two, three, four, five, whatever.
I don't, I don't, I don't, first of all, see, even if we put, let's suppose you put in a requirement that five, you can still say a minimum number.
Right, okay, and and that's what I'm saying.
I mean, we could be less than five, but minimum number means nothing in my mind, right?
Yeah, so...
No, I understand, it's not...
A minimum number could be, you know, now, the big, as I say, the big change here is we're saying you can only have signs at arterial road intersections.
Right.
You know, so that does significantly limit the number of signs. You can't, I mean, 'cause the concern is you're gonna get this situation of open house signs like the guy selling maple syrup down the road. He's gonna put them up every five feet, you know, open house, open house, you're getting closer, you're getting warmer, you know. I mean, that's, now, have we had that? No, could we have that? Absolutely. You know, and then people are gonna be yelling, "Why did you allow that?" Well, because the regulations allow it. Now, I don't, you know, if the number's three, four, five, you know, I don't have a big deal, but...
So Chip, how many is the maximum you would ever need?
Well, I was just gonna say, well, what what if you just change it to, uh, open house signs can only be at at arterial road intersections and, you know, only... Well, as opposed to putting a number, just putting, open house signs are allowed on the property and only at, or whatever.
Well, we just strike, you just strike the number. You can just strike the number, and that would mean that you're obligated to basically put them at arterial road intersections. It's more than that, though, there are, you should read the rules on directional signs. You know, where you can't, you know, they're not supposed to be freestanding if at all possible, and there are some other things going on here. But...
Well, and is it, it takes best interest to have them at every single intersection he's either...
I don't think it is, and I don't think it's not, my personal opinion, it's not necessary now. I mean, there's argument of two, if, you know, should it be four?
No matter what, I mean, to my point, there's always gonna be a case where you come up and say, "Well, see, I think I need one more than that." I think three is a reasonable amount, that covers most situations. And I suppose, I mean, the the way it is, if there was this extreme thing that made it so outrageously impossible that they could go to the selectmen and say, "Look, this particular case, we put up an additional..."
Well, and we'd have to get language in here that that essentially said that we had the right to override. We don't.
Procedurally, Mark, if we change this, we have another, we have to post another public hearing?
Not if you just strike the number, that would be an amendment.
Not if you're just striking the number and and letting it say, "And off-post directional signs are allowed as long as they conform to directional sign regulations."
Boy, I don't, are you sure about that?
No, you don't need to have another public hearing.
If you're changing the number, I think if you're changing the number of signs, that it would require a public hearing.
I I think, well...
You shoot me down on this all the time.
You're safer if you have another public hearing.
And we, and we could do it in March?
No. We're gonna have to have a special...
No, this has to be done by February third.
So we have to have a special meeting.
You would have to have a special meeting, and we've gotta post it, and, yeah.
Okay, just wondering where we stand.
So we could keep it or strike the number? That's our choice?
No.
No, keep it.
No, we can change it, but we've got to have a special...
If you change it, you'll have to have another public hearing.
Alright, yeah, what if you struck it?
Yeah, what if you don't change it at all?
What if you remove the the change? I mean, would you still have to have a public hearing? No, you wouldn't.
If you, no, if you, you would just say, "We're not gonna, we're not gonna change anything."
Right.
Then you don't have to have another public hearing to do that. You just don't vote to move forward.
Right, this would, just, right.
Table it till next year, and theoretically, the selectmen would have the directional, the off-premise framework to work from if it became an issue.
I think you, could we move, let me ask you this question, Mark, can we move everything other than this open house sign thing forward?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You you can move forward.
I personally, I am, I would propose that we hold another public hearing. I think it's important to establish that you cannot have open house signs other than at arterial intersections. I I I'm tired of these signs creeping up all over the place.
So you propose changing the number, eliminating the number, and just keeping the...
Uh, and the, I'd I'd say, like, I'll tell you what, I'd be more than willing to go to four because to me, it's getting them at the arterial intersections is, now, should there be a limit? Yeah, but, you know, I I can't imagine that you'd wanna have more than four signs. If we change the number, though, don't we need... Then you have to hold a public hearing. Why don't we just strike it for this year and bring it up again?
Because we're still changing it. By deleting the number, we're still changing it from two to zero, it's still a change.
We can't just withdraw it?
Yeah, you're talking about, you're talking about withdrawing the whole change.
I'm talking about withdrawing the whole change for this year.
Well, we put so much into this, huh?
If you withdraw the whole thing, then you can't, you're not restricting them to the main interest.
Yeah.
Right.
But, I mean, just as a, as a point, I mean, we essentially police, not police, but between Waterworld Realty and and ourselves, like, if there's a sign that's left out, I know that Waterworld Realty is done doing open houses, and it just like was left by accident, I'll pick it up and bring it over. I mean, if there's, I highly doubt that there's somebody that's gonna do the, you know, maple syrup thing in the valley, you know, especially on my watch, or or Mike's watch. Do you agree?
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's not like anybody has any interest in in doing that. And then if if somebody, you know, kinda moves forward with something like that, then, you know, I will go up and talk to them.
I think from the standpoint of extended signs, I think that's more towards the north end, where the developments are, where here it's not so bad. And it would be arterial, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, Greeley Hill would be a tough spot to find a house, you know, up in that area. But I think you would need more than one or two up in those areas to find where you're going. Cascade, not so much, it's pretty direct. But just getting down to West Branch, that area, you might need like four.
And even if you were to take somebody from, to Windsor Hill, from Town Square, Tyler Springs, at a, at Conference Center, Athletic Club, that's three. And then it's, you know, Noon Peak Road, four.
From the center of town?
Well, the Athletic.
Why can't, why can't you go off the other way, out to Village, down to the...
Off the golf course, and that way?
They have to be intersection, so it wouldn't be the Athletic Center. So what if we made it four?
I think four's a good number.
I think four would the additional requirement of the minimum, use the minimum on it. I grant you it's a little loose, but at least it's something to protect the loop down.
Because then it still adds up to the five that you keep talking about.
Well, no, on on the condo property, you can have any...
It's just getting people to those places that are far out.
I agree.
I'm a little confused, if we change the number today from two to four...
I don't think we should have any, right.
We have to hold a special number.
Yeah, hold it four.
Alright.
Can I ask a question?
If if we keep with the, if we go back and withdraw three, five, eleven, four, seven, dash, one, open house signs, and you go ahead forward with your off-premise directional signs and all of these off-premise signs, doesn't that infer that these open house signs need to be at, what was the word you were saying?
Arterial.
Arterial points.
It it it, it's, it's open to interpretation, is that what's the phrase, Mike?
Wouldn't you say that infers?
It's it's open to interpretation. Somebody's gonna argue, "You have a special thing on open house signs," that doesn't apply. I'm not a lawyer. You write it down, it's clear whether it does or does not apply. We we run into this all the time with somebody saying, "Well, that doesn't apply to me," you know?
Yep, I agree.
Well, I'll make a motion that we change it to two to four.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Any further discussion?
To be, okay, I think we have the motion on the floor.
You have a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, I mean.
We're gonna reevaluate.
Yeah, we have a motion to reevaluate, which we passed, and we we...
And we withdrew it, and now we need a motion to reissue it, right, or something?
The motion was to reconsider open house sign language.
Right.
Right.
Which we did.
Yeah, we did.
Which we did.
Okay, listen, do you have...
But there wasn't a vote on it.
No vote on it. No vote on it.
I don't know, we probably should've voted before the discussion, I guess, but...
Vote on it.
I thought we did, 'cause we had a second and I thought I said, didn't I say?
I thought we voted on it too, but maybe we didn't.
Did we vote on it?
We were obviously all in favor of it, we spoke up.
I thought we did.
Well, let's just vote on it now and get it done and then...
Okay, uh, motion to reconsider, it's been seconded. All in favor of reconsidering the motion?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll make the motion to change the two to four.
On open house signs?
On open house signs.
Yeah, and I'll second it.
Three, four, four, seven. And it's seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now, we need a motion to move this forward to a special, to a public hearing?
Well, yeah, we have more, there is one other thing that's probably gonna be in that new meeting.
Let's, let's back up.
It does keep going. Get them all before you...
Okay.
I'm keeping track which ones need...
But does that prevent us from spe, from, that doesn't present, uh, per, whoa, whoa. It doesn't present, prevent us from setting a date for a public meeting? We can add the things into the public meeting bucket as, right, or...
Yes, but your decision today, you've got one of two decisions to make today. If you wanna hold a, if you wanna hold two, potentially two public hearings, you have to decide language, specific language today, which gets posted today and you have to hold that first hearing by January twentieth. If you're confident that you're gonna come up with exactly the language that you want, then you can wait and have a later public hearing, okay? And give us some time to actually post it later on. So that's why I say, if you decide what things you're gonna move forward to a new public hearing, you should know all of them before you set a date.
All right, I get it.
Now, is, that comment was in reference to signs, Mark, or in reference to anything?
Signs and anything else.
Anything else?
That comes up.
Okay.
'Cause I think there's probably gonna be more.
There's something else that's gonna be brought up, so...
Once we get through signs, let's finish signs. Can I just get one point of clarification here? On the middle column on your sheet, there is language that is in italics. It is correct that that is being added, right? Okay. So, so the right-hand column, when it says none, that means nothing was deleted. But there is italics that is language that is being added. I just wanna make that so that when you're voting that you...
Yes.
Okay, and so town council knows what we're, what we're doing.
What about the rest of this now? So now we can have a motion to...
Well, I don't, I, we can't, can we move it forward? You see, the problem is if we move this to a warrant article and then hold a special meeting, then that one section has to be another warrant article?
Yeah, you would, your vote today, if, if this is the only thing that you wanna hold another public hearing on, just move everything else, if it's good to go, move it forward to the warrant and we'll send it to town council.
I'll, I'll make a motion to move all changes except the section regarding open house signs to a warrant.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Now, does, does that mean that at the next public hearing, that everything other than that one is off the table?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Any, any discussion on that? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're gonna move while the rest accepted up, four, seven, one. Okay, thank you very much. Guess I'm just gonna stay with zoning changes. One of the things that we talked about last, last one was the density of C one. And it's, we received a letter from Bill Cantlin. I'm gonna pass this around.
Any copies?
Yes. And if you remember, we talked about a special zone, an overlay zone that Mark Kane actually sent us. I'm gonna bring that...
Sure.
Yeah.
Get next one here?
Those are copies for you.
Everybody got one?
And sort of pass around this. Bill, uh, Bill approached me after our last meeting.
Do you have to answer one of these?
He was really interested in this overlay zone. So I'm gonna make a proposal.
What do you need?
Over there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he just wants that right there.
No, she's looking for the chart.
That one.
She's looking for it.
I'm looking for the chart.
Chart, no, I don't know if it was...
I don't know.
Um, there was, well...
Do you wanna have a copy?
This is overlay.
That was a distinct disadvantage, 'cause I didn't have one of those.
There's no notes on that, thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna propose that we change the C one zone to a density of fifteen units per acre and create a special zone along Smooth Brook Road and Valley Road to Village Road that may contain multifamily dwellings, the minimum of three. And up to a third duplexes. That's two per acre. And this would be the, the special zone.
It's yellow?
It's yellow. So that yellow would be excluded from the fifteen units per acre. Now, that, originally, we proposed twelve units per acre and this compromise would increase the core fifteen and allow development along the outside edge with smaller buildings, which, uh, Mark Kane, Mark Kane actually suggested. So it's part of the results of the pedestrian village study.
And he's...
And, and, and just so I'm, and, just so I'm aware, is this the proposed general description of C one or this would be what would get written into the zoning?
The yellow would, it would create, yellow is, would be a special zone.
Yeah, but the, the four bars at the bottom define what the C one zone is because you can't, I'm, uh, first of all, I'm assuming this in no way implies that we've approved the Green Peak development for that whole car.
Oh, absolutely, right.
Right, I mean, it in no way implies that.
No way implies.
So it could be that Green Peak never gets developed.
That's correct.
Right. And we still got this C one zone sitting there. And so it's, it's, and, and so what I'm saying is, is the four rules that apply are the rules that are listed here.
Can I ask you a question, Bill? When you say that C one zone exists, you're not talking about the overlay, you're talking...
I'm talking, well, the overlay rule gets written into the regulation and these are the descriptions of what's allowed in that overlay zone.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I, I would say the one problem is if, not a problem, but one of the things that you talked about agreeing to here was that it would allow a limited amount of duplexes in that. And, uh, I don't know how to wr, what would we, how would we write that in? See, I, I don't have a problem with the concept at all that up to a third duplexes, but suppose somebody wants to build the one-third duplexes first?
Well, that's, that's...
How do we prevent that thing?
Well, in my proposal, with a third, I mean, he would have to build two multifamily homes before he gets to build one duplex.
I, I think that the fact that we're allowing, uh, uh, duplexes on a limited basis here would have to be in the description of the zone, of the, of the special zoning for C one and the rule about restriction would have to be in there. They, that must be in a ratio of three to one or something or, or otherwise you're presuming that it's Green Peak that gets built and you gotta give some guidance to anybody else that comes along behind as to what they can and cannot do. That would have to be part of that requirement on the bottom.
Yeah, I agree. And, and rethinking this, in rethinking that, that area, in my mind, you would have to build two multifamily homes before he's even eligible to develop, before he's even eligible for a duplex. So, uh, you might wanna change that to a half, that means he builds one multifamily.
So it's, it's a two to one ratio, right?
Two to one, that's what I'm proposing.
Right, so within that zone, we'd have to make some statement. If the builder proposes to build two, you know, uh, something along the lines of, say, two triplexes, he's allowed one duplex.
Right, but he's gotta build the two first.
But you gotta, well, you'd have to propose all of them at the same time.
Yeah.
And, and I guess at the point you tell me to approve it, we would have to then say, be aware now, you can't start construction on the duplex and never finish the others.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how we do that.
Well, we could make it a half.
Would we ask for advice from town council about how would we do it, if we could do it?
I mean, you can't make somebody do something, is always the problem.
Well, this is allowing somebody to do something.
Yeah, it's allowing somebody to do. So my comment is, is I think that two to one ratio somehow would have to be expressed as one of the conditions in C one.
Yeah.
Uh, yes. I think Bill's intention with this overlay was to give us the ability to, uh, build the duplex next. The market right now is for the duplex and not for the three-unit building.
Well, you know, here we, we're talking about a specific development now, so we, we're on dangerous ground here.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
How do you determine what the market requirements are?
Well, it... That's a, that's a, that's a good question. I don't generally determine the market conditions. The market determines those conditions. It's really, what do the buyers want at this point?
And it's what you saw with what you were trying to sell, with triplex, the middle unit?
We have a, we have a sizable database of highly interested people that wanna over time move into Green Peak. Some of them are, I wanna wait a year, I wanna wait two years. Some of them are economic reasons that, you know, they're not ready to do it today and they see the long-term, you know... When we started planning Green Peak, we kind, I, I did, my analysis was we were probably gonna market one building a year. And that was a little, a little aggressive.
Yeah.
The market right now is, and when I say the market, it's what the people are telling us. That's, that's who the market is, not a, it's not a research that we went out and, and calculated. It's telling us that, you know, two end units, uh, would be highly desirable and highly, um, I, I would, I would assume that they would be pre, pre-sold and potentially delivered for, you know, the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen spec season.
But it, it's also an economic problem. I mean, consideration on your part for building these because of the situation that you did have at Green Peak, correct?
Yes, because of the, the design, the quality and the infrastructure that goes into it, you know, we're basically gonna build a, you know, a unit that potentially could be sitting there for a year. And the economics on that, um, because even though when you look at what we're selling these homes for, they're, they're very expensive homes to construct, the way, the way we put them together. So, for us, it would be, it's, it's extremely important to get that duplex in the mix because we're gonna pre-market this and sell it prior to, prior to construction. And when I say pre-sell it, you know, on a...
You're gonna, you're gonna lift to the rules we wrote.
No, exactly. You know, it's, um, non-binding. But, but historically, in my building career, probably seventy-five percent of the homes I've built and sold have been non-binding. So we understand how that process works. So that's not, that's not a concern.
All right.
You know, a three-unit building at Green Peak could, you know, be potentially, you know, pre-marketed for a year plus. So, I mean, I just wanted to put that out there because, you know, there's, I know there's goals of the board, but, you know, I just think it's important that you understand what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one, one comment from previous meeting discussions. In the letter from Bill Cantlin, in the second paragraph discusses the, uh, or, or this language as to the discussion of the possible interior road across or, or intersecting with Boulder Path. The language in Bill's letter, for, for my purposes and my thinking, there isn't anything that says that we'll grant a right-of-way through that special overlay zone to allow that to happen. The language in Bill's letter is ambiguous again, where I think that'll never happen, no matter what anybody says. So I'm not, I, I'm not a proponent of seeing language that, verb doesn't mean anything.
Is the board prepared to take any action on this at this time or do you wanna...
I think we need to...
Okay.
I do. I think we need to really sit down and consider what this means for the town.
And that's, that's what we were last meeting. I just, I'm just bringing it up because Bill kinda asked us to and I thought it would be fair to him to, to bring it up again.
I think we should have definitely further discussions on this and, you know, we just got this today and it's not enough time to digest it.
Okay.
Is there anything we'd want to move forward with for this special meeting that we're planning? Or wait till the next regular town...
I don't think we have time.
I don't think there's enough time.
We would have to really, we would have to be pretty firm on this today
Just to clarify, yeah, yeah.
To move it forward, so... So is the general consensus to...
Move forward.
To put it into next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, stay with the...
I think we need time.
C one rules as they are now.
Okay, okay, so we'll move that. We'll move that into next year and give us something to talk about.
So are you withdrawing your motion?
I didn't make a motion.
There's no motion on this.
You moved to increase it to fifteen units per acre?
I don't think it was seconded.
No, no, there's not a motion.
No, there was a second.
Paled for lack of second?
There was never a motion.
I think I didn't.
Did you?
I think I did say motion, but it, it wasn't seconded.
No, nobody seconded it, 'cause we just got this information, okay?
Thank you for the clarification. Keep us on our toes.
You're a parliamentarian.
It's not, it's not easy. It's not, it's not easy. What happened to Mark?
I don't know.
Is Mark?
Nothing yet. We're ready.
I think we're ready to go into non-public.
Oh, not public. Yeah, sorry, I had to make you one more comment.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Another meeting, we'll reconvene to meeting at ten o'clock. So, I guess the next thing on the agenda is new business, discussion on losses with, with the ski resort.
Uh, you know, we really just want to sort of begin the conversation on a proposal to find a long-term solution to have the horses here. Um, you know, we just wanna be able to sort of keep up with the other high-end resorts like Bretton Woods or Jackson that, that are able to sort of provide this experience for their guests. Uh, and, you know, well, you know, we're, we're trying to find a temporary solution for, for the horses we have here now. Um, we're more interested in, in finding something long-term that will kind of appease everybody. You know, we're not trying to step on anybody's toes or anything. Um, our, our original idea was to expand the definition of a recreation center as to something that may include horses or horse stables for those purposes. Um, that while that could infringe on sort of zoning around somebody else's properties and not just ours, we realized that might be sort of a sticky area. Uh, but if there might be some sort of procedure or permit to create a waiver for, for specific uses in properties, that, that could be helpful. Although, the, the language here that, that Bill proposed, I, I think is great. If, if the, if that works, I think that would work for us. But, um, you know, our, our purpose is really just to sort of get the process, you know, kinda started.
Now, what kind of level of services are you envisioning? I know it's early on, but like, are you envisioning trail rides, wagon rides? How many horses would you be thinking about?
Uh, you, you know, with the, the trail rides is something that we've already even discussed with the, with the Forest Service because they're interested in being able to open up some of the trails available for horses there. Um, we've, we have discussed summer wagon rides and things like that. Uh, we haven't really gotten to the point of how many we'd, we'd want. Um, for us right now, it's really just, just this. Uh, you know, personally, I, I could see a place where we would want to possibly give lessons or something like that, but I don't know that it would ever require, you know, more than two to four horses. But, again, that's, that's sort of an early on, you know, concept here. We, you know, we haven't really thought beyond kind of the immediate sleigh rides. But, uh, it, down the road, it would be something that would be a four-season use.
I mean, it just seems for commercial purposes, just the visioning, you know, how do, you have to do it and make a profit.
Right.
That two to four horses is really underestimating what you would need, you know, to retain an instructor, uh, safety personnel, whenever. I would think we'd be looking at considerably more than that.
Uh, that's possible. Uh, we haven't really gotten to that, to that stage.
When you say, I'm sorry. When you say instructions, is that for people to learn how to do wagon rides and sleigh rides, or is that for whatever you call equestrian, horse riding?
Uh, it's, I've.
Jumping or whatever?
This isn't something that, that we're sort of moving on. Um, it's been discussed in terms of equestrian-type things. Again, it's just something that's sort of been discussed as a potential, why we would want to sort of recreate the language, just to sort of open up that opportunity. Um, but, you know, I don't think anybody's planning on building an equestrian course anywhere to, to, to make that happen. But, uh, but it, it is to, you know, eventually kind of create that potential.
So, the question right now is the use, the land use.
Yeah.
Because of the actions taken in nineteen seventy.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna have to address that first.
If Bill's got the proposal, we'll do it.
Well, this is just a concept. I, we, you know, but that's along the lines of what we talked, which we would allow equestrians in.
Might wanna consider.
In, by special exception, we'd allow them in the recreational area. Now, we'd have, you have to put that statement into the recreational zone. But I would do it by special exception. And I was just looking at the rules for, for special exception and what they would, what some, in order to get a special exception, you would have to be able to demonstrate what? That the proposed site is an appropriate location for such use, that the proposed use does not adversely affect adjacent area or result in a diminution of property values, the proposed use complies with all other regulations established by the ordinance for the district. Yeah, that's a non-starter. And there would be no issues or no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians resulting from such use. So, those are to be the criteria.
Those would be the criteria in a special exception.
You know, and as long as somebody said, well, I wanna put it here, and they went down that list and said, well, yeah. So, it really gets down to if you had a butter that screamed, you know, or a series of a butters that screamed, you know, I don't want that next to mine over here, you know, that might be some cause to say, well, I'd be thought about some other place, you know.
Well, some of the wrecked land is, is along the river, which is the fill-in protection there.
I'm assuming that's governed by state law, right? So. I, you know, I got, got into the question, I, you know, I don't know whether it would be, you'd be allowed to graze, keep an animal down there or not. I have no idea.
Yeah.
Probably not.
Not within a couple hundred feet of the.
At least a couple of hundred feet.
Well, it's a flood zone more than anything, right?
Well, I think it's like minimum of twenty to fifty.
First problem is you got any building you put up there is in, it's gonna go underwater.
Yeah.
Well, that's one area, right, of wrecked land?
Well, we, we can't, unless we created a special equestrian zone, we couldn't limit it to that sliver. It'd have to be all wrecked land.
Right, yeah. No, I'm just thinking.
But wrecked land is what? I mean, it's basically the golf course in that, right? Golf course, tennis courts and.
Those two, two parcels going in.
Put them up on the snow's mountain.
Yeah, it's here.
Incinerator Road is.
Here.
Is forest?
This is town and then all of the.
Golf court.
And then, um, EBTs and the tennis courts.
And where's the well exclusion area?
Uh, well.
That.
EBTs is still zone wreck?
Uh, some of it is. Uh, no, all of it is. Yeah, we didn't change it.
All of it still is, yeah. Yeah, we just created a special exception. That's right.
Yeah. Um, the wellhead protection circles, I think. There, I'm showing on there. I think I have them there.
It's already.
It doesn't seem so much that area would be a broken.
Yeah, well, I, flood zone has to be a problem. I don't know if there's anything other than naked reef fish.
Well, I think, I think that sliver is also wrecked land up there.
Cascade.
It is. The sliver's going up the mountain is wrecked.
Yeah.
What that hundred acres do?
No. Uh, you know, we're, you know, I don't think I said, there's stuff down by, uh, Minnesota, and, and way on the other corner of Waterville Valley, down by Swamp Lake, is zone wreck.
Wreck, yeah.
Right?
That area in back of Mad River would wreck, that wrecked land.
It's not, that, that is not.
Behind Mad, Mad River is wrecked.
It's wrecked.
It is.
Yeah.
I was told it was not wrecked.
No, it, it is. It's zone wreck. The town-owned property below Mad River is, is.
The condos.
You mean the, the Brock's property?
No, no, not the Brock's property.
That's the chunk, that's the big chunk. What's that zone?
The Brock's property is zoned LDR. The, the sandwich corner.
Is wrecked.
Is wreck.
Right.
But the area below the Mad, uh, the Mad River condos is town-owned and that is wrecked.
But that's gonna be in a flood zone. I mean, in the, in the, uh.
That's in the shoreline. Shoreline. Some of it is. Two hundred and fifty feet, the first two hundred and fifty feet is.
And it's probably.
Well, yeah, it's in the flood zone, yeah. Um, here's the, here's the map that shows the exclusion circles.
Okay.
For wells one and three. So, a lot of that wrecked land down by the river is in the.
Flood.
The four hundred foot protective radius.
Protective, yeah.
So.
What's this down here?
I, you know, my, my reaction even that.
That's, that's Mad River, that's, that's what we.
If horses were allowed down there by, you know, but if, if they weren't prohibited because the state said they're too close to the river, um, I don't know, you know, maybe that's not a bad use for that for horses down there.
Where, Bill?
Down, along the river.
Well, yeah, um, but the problem is it's, it's within the protective radius of wells.
I'm saying that you'd have to be outside all of those.
Yeah, yeah, outside of those, right.
I thought there were two parcels and one of them was outside those wellhead areas.
Um, well, all of the land here is outside, so you could access it from Osceola Road, right? This is High Country.
Yeah.
And this, all of this area is outside of these circles.
Okay.
Yeah. So, there is some land down there that could, could be used. So.
And the sliver along Cascade, that's all wrecked land up there too. Could you get that to it?
Mm-hmm. If you can get to it.
I might suggest that we change the word raising to keeping. Someone could be keeping horses without raising, I guess, probably.
Well, I, I thought I did. I thought I changed it to the boarding.
It is changed to boarding.
Yeah, but as far as the raising of livestock, livestock, the raising of.
Is prohibited. How about housing?
Those are prohibited.
Yeah, you wanna.
It's a furby animal.
You wanna prohibit the keeping of them, I would think.
What's the difference between, isn't raising and why?
If I, I, I just think you're gonna run into a little bit of trouble. If someone comes in and says, I'm not really raising any horses, I'm just kinda.
No, alright, good point.
Raising.
Boarding and housing, yeah.
Raising and.
To keeping.
You could say raising and keeping or raising.
We could say the boarding of livestock, or, or the keeping is pretty wide open.
Raising or.
Yeah.
Well, I'll ask, I'll ask town council what the proper word is. If this is the concept that you want, is the concept, you don't want them kept at all, right?
Outside of the.
I mean, I'm asking, I'm not, I'm not telling, no, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm saying, what is the concept that you want? Cause she's gonna come up with the, the actual language.
I, I think that.
Yeah, the idea is there.
I don't wanna let anybody keep livestock anyplace, right?
Except by special exception and the recreational.
Well, I mean, the horses I can live with.
Well, the boarding of the horses you can live with, right?
Yeah.
Because you don't want them breeding and raising any horses.
We don't want them.
Right, exactly.
No, right.
I don't think they have any intentions of doing that.
Well.
You never know.
They don't, but.
Stop that.
Yeah, I mean, nature takes its course.
That's why they have stalls.
That's right.
So, if, if we went ahead with a special exception for where they are now, there is no time limit on that exception, Bill? If we.
It's, a special exception just means that it's not what, it's not a, it's not a use by right.
Yeah.
So, you have to go to the ZBA and get them to say it's okay, what you wanna do there.
And our regulations would give guidance system.
Well, we can write them in if, if we can think of them. Otherwise, they're these general things. It's not a nuisance, it's not a safety hazard. But we can put more restrictions on it.
The only difference is when you go through special exception, though, I mean, that's locked in, that area is locked in for that use forever.
No, no, that's a, that's a variance.
Oh, it's a variance?
So.
A special exception is only allowed if it's in the zoning ordinance, that it is an allowed use by special exception.
Okay.
Okay, so, a variance is what's permanent and goes with the land forever.
Yeah, forever, forever.
So, this, this'll answer, or, or this'll help us with the question of livestock and uh, boarding of horses, et cetera. This, um, doesn't address the situation of where they're located now?
Yeah, I, I believe where they're located now is an issue for the selectmen.
Well, it's gonna be a planning board issue for site plan review. But it is a, it is
If they can formally apply, yeah.
right now. Right. They have not formally applied for site plan review, so they're in violation of the site plan regulations right now.
So, that.
They have a new commercial use that has not been permitted.
But this would.
So, is, could that?
This would prohibit that, that location as of today.
If you move this forward, yes.
Right, cause that's a.
Then they couldn't apply for site plan review.
Cause that's village, village commercial.
Because that is village commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, temporary situation and the long-term situation are two different.
Yeah.
Animals.
Yeah, and I think Bill's right. It's a selectman issue right now for where they are.
It's a horse of a different color.
There you go. I like that one too.
So, you wanna?
Here we go. There are many of them. I'll be, I'll be in town all week.
Are you gonna bounce this off the town attorney, the wording?
Yes. How do you wanna proceed with this? What, what process do you wanna use?
Well, we gotta get this, in order to even take it to a public hearing, we have to have specific wording, right?
That's right.
So, we would have to, as, as, as we've done with signs, we'd have to have, here is what we specifically proposed to change to the zoning ordinance written out.
Yeah.
And then we would have to vote to send it to a public hearing. Now, we could use the special meeting to vote to send it to the, to a one-shot public hearing and.
That's right. So, so you, you don't have specific language right now, so the twentieth is out. So, you need a special meeting before January twenty-first, okay, to come up and vote on the language. Anytime between now and January twenty-first, I think if you gave us at least a week, we can come up with.
Can we vote by email?
No.
It has to be.
Town council will look.
You gotta be in a meeting. Town council will look at this, they'll come up with specific language.
Okay.
Will present the language to you. You say, yes, that's the language we wanna go with. We'll post a public hearing and then you'll hold the public hearing between the twenty-first and the third of February, whatever the number of days.
If we, if we sent this to the town attorney today, now.
Yeah.
You think we could get some kind of response?
I, I don't think it's specific enough. You're not proposing a specific change. You're proposing like the concept. We don't have the actual language. So, I don't, I don't think it's enough to hold a public hearing on the twentieth.
Okay.
So, I think you're gonna get one shot at this. I think that's the best way to do it.
But if we center the language, we'd probably hear back by next Thursday?
Yeah, I can tell her that we need, we need the actual language by next Thursday.
And we could have a quick meeting next Thursday to move it forward?
To the public hearing, yes.
Which would be somewhere between the twentieth and the third.
We still have the.
Between the twentieth and the third, correct. Whatever. We need twelve days from the date that you vote to move it forward to a public hearing. We need twelve days.
So, we still will have some time with, it should, um, the wording from the attorney,
No, see, the wording from the attorney, it's an all, it's gonna be an all or nothing thing. Because in that, in that public hearing, at the end of that public hearing, you're gonna have to vote to either send it to town meeting or not.
Now, in the intro, the selectmen will take care of making a decision as to what's gonna go on. Is that correct?
Chris has indicated he's coming into the selectmen's meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. And then, once the language comes back to us, we'll make action. Okay, I just wanna understand the process.
So, Bill, will we be changing the suggestion to the town attorney, changing the raising to boarding?
Yeah, I'm gonna, well, I'm putting.
Words like that, we're fine. Now, if she's okay with the concept of a blanket restriction on certain types of farming activities in all. Words like that, we're fine. Now, if she's okay with the concept of a blanket restriction on certain types of farming activities in all zones. Then we're, then we can figure out what it is we wanna do. When she says, no, you can't do that, you have to allow all of these at least someplace. I don't know what the hell we do.
Okay.
Now, is it my understanding that they, the mountain will come down to do a site plan?
Uh, yes, as far as I know, yes.
Okay. Does it make sense to have a permanent special exception, or do we want it to be, have to be renewed every couple of years?
No, it's, well, no, you only have to get it, once you get an exception, it's forever. That, that use is granted forever. I got it.
Unless it's changed, yes.
Even if the situation changes?
Unless the situation changed, yeah, I mean, but, once they went in and the, and the ZBA said, yep, it's okay, you can house horses here. They wouldn't have to renew that every year.
Right.
Okay.
No, if they went from four to.
No, when I, when I, the skate park, we should have never, that's our own fault.
Well, a skate park is not a special exception.
Right. I don't know what it is.
That's an annual review.
Skate parks are not allowed by special exception in the village commercial zone. It has to be, it's just like all those other areas, it has to be there. To be voted on by the ZBA under those criteria that Bill ran. I just wanna clarify one thing, cause the last sentence, cause I think it's important that all other agricultural and farming operations are permitted in all zones. By special exception.
I'd be nice to have that concept, but I don't know if that's gonna fly, but.
Well, but, but that, that is a pretty broad allowance of uses, which I think is gonna go a long way to that RSA six seventy-two.
Right.
Right.
So, I, I like it being in there, but I wanna make sure that that's the concept that you want her to put language to. Well.
Well.
Basically, bottom line.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we? The con, the tillage conservation of soil is allowed, the use of fertilizers is allowed. Uh, applying agricultural chemicals is allowed.
By special exception, I would.
By special exception, the raising of bees would be allowed.
Each time it's gonna happen there.
Yeah.
Uh, and production and cultivation of floriculture, viticulture, forestry, horticulture crops. You know, so you could have a nursery, you could have a, all that stuff would be allowed, anything that grows in the ground.
I mean, there's so much discussion in town in the past with chemicals and fertilizers and whatever, and now it's like, there's a paper, I don't.
Well, our, our move right now is, is if it's, it's governed by state law.
Right.
And if you conform to the state law, you conform to the state law. There are state laws about what you can and can't put on.
And I, I will get her to address to you guys in writing what the impact of condo documents are.
That would be.
Yeah, that's important.
So, that's important for you guys to know.
Yeah, cause this has opened up a lot.
Cause you don't want the ZBA potentially allowing something by special exception that's prohibited by the condo docs and, okay. Because that may provide, uh, additional protections that. You know, the zoning might not be able to do. Okay.
Okay, so, um, we're gonna set it up for next Thursday, we're gonna get a call on next Thursday, we can make a, tie up.
What time?
Do you want? Can we do it on a different day?
Oh, that's why I'm.
I don't, I'm.
What, what, what's a good day?
Can we do an afternoon instead of a morning?
I'd be out for afternoons.
I cannot do an afternoon.
On tax.
So, I guess that's morning.
Do you know?
Thursday's not good for me.
What about Wednesday?
Wednesday's okay.
Wednesday's fine with me. So, it's Wednesday, though.
Wednesday is okay, it's a meeting that date requirements?
Wednesday's the fourteenth.
Oh, yeah, no, this, this meeting, we only need twenty-four hours, so. But, no, we need more, I mean, as far as notice, we need more time to get the language together, but.
Oh, no, I didn't bring Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yeah.
I got a doctor's.
What's the date?
But I, I'll have the language here and Sharon will know what's going on, so I don't think you need me.
Can I? I don't know how.
You wanna do it Monday?
I don't, I can't do Monday.
Monday's tough.
Okay.
For me.
Tuesday?
Tuesday?
Tuesday would be great. Tuesday?
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 Tuesday's okay.
Tuesday's good. Vehicle, what time? About the thirteenth?
Tuesday the thirteenth at.
At eight?
Yeah, I, well, I'll tell her, put a rush on it.
She's got the weekend.
Got the weekend.
What time will we be doing it, guys?
Eight?
Eight.
Eight o'clock?
Eight AM?
All right.
Good, Tuesday the thirteenth.
You good with that?
At, uh, eight o'clock, okay. Okey-dokey, um. I think we've wrapped up the zoning changes, so, so, so we're gonna. Mark, I think we've wrapped up the zoning changes, and we've still got a public hearing that's open, and I think I can close that because we're gonna renotice it.
We're gonna notice a new public hearing on this language.
So, I'm gonna close this public hearing, close that off.
Are we closing this even though we're still talking about the signage? Is everything?
Well, we're, we're gonna renotice it.
We're gonna renotice it with new language.
The signage, yeah.
With that one, with that one change to the signage. So, this particular public hearing, I think I can close.
Yeah.
So, I'm gonna close the public hearing just to wrap it up, so we start fresh again.
Yeah. Start all over again.
We start all over again.
We need to decide.
But only one thing on signs.
Are we deciding now when we're having the public hearing on the signs, or are we seeing how things go next week with this before we decide on the signs?
Yeah, that's right, we haven't picked that date, you're right.
That date was.
Well, with the signs, you have language.
Right.
We're not gonna move that forward until we have the date for the horse.
Okay.
And do those two things.
So, we just know the vote together, okay.
Now, on, uh, next Tuesday, we have the wording, can we still make the twentieth?
No. Twelve days, twelve days prior, so the earliest we could do it would be the twenty-fifth. But that still wouldn't give you enough time to have a second meeting.
That's still. So, it'd be.
So, it's sometime between the twenty-fifth and the third will be your next, so you should pick that day that you want.
You should pick that date, I guess.
Because we need to put something in the paper right away, right?
Yep, if you want the union later.
Wait a minute, though, we need twelve days from the.
Published date, we could do.
Yeah, from the thirteenth, right, so that, between the twenty-fifth and the third.
Twenty-ninth, that's a Thursday?
Yeah, the twenty-ninth is a Thursday.
Then it works.
Uh, we, we can notice it in the paper, sure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay with everybody?
Say that again, I'm sorry, the twenty-ninth?
Twenty, twenty-nine.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
And it'll, there'll be a bonus for all of this extra time.
Mark's bringing breakfast.
Time's ten. Your, your salary is gonna be multiplied by ten for all of these meetings, right? Carrie likes that because.
There may be a minimum wage now.
No, there's no minimum wage, we've checked.
These are great town perks.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so now, I guess the next thing is the old business. Clearwater line continued from eleven thirteen, fourteen, and I guess that public hearing is still open, right?
Yeah.
That is, you have the maps and the language is right underneath the maps then.
I'm gonna recuse myself on this one.
Please do.
Get Terry a good shot of him.
Little practice. Okay, I guess all we really needed was the language.
You needed the language of the warrant T Ds, you've got the, they've been prepared, so.
Which one is this, Terry?
This is the lot line adjustment, uh, and lot combination, this line right here. This is the, this is the river.
Water front, pretty.
Too bad it's just a girl.
So, you need to, okay.
Oh, you own a garage too?
You own a garage.
No, I don't own a garage, I have my house.
Have you seated?
You need to seat Harry.
Need to seat Harry, so you've got a.
Okay, Harry's gonna be seated. This is a plan we looked at, uh, a couple months ago.
Yeah, which is strange, yeah, yeah.
It's this lot right here beside the, the river, actually owned by, uh, Whidbilly Company. Um, they're giving over a piece of land to the town along the river. Um, for, that's going to be, uh, what do you, what's that zone?
Uh, this is special civic, the land that comes back to us will be special civic, the land that goes to him will be village commercial.
Got special.
Okay. And, uh, we had been waiting for the language from the lawyer for the lot line adjustment and the, um, lot merger, I guess, for the town.
It's an easement, so, two, two things, uh, we just. Alright, so, the. Or, Ray, can I borrow you for a second? Just a face, sorry, don't, don't mean to turn my back on the crowd in internet land. So, the, the language that we were waiting for was the easement along the trail on the river. We have, the easement document seems to be in, all in order, okay? Basically, we have all land rights except ownership, you know, maintenance of the trails, the own, you know. Ownership or the right to have the trail there, um, equating to ownership, except we don't own the land. Okay? Um, we're gonna take the line out that currently divides town hall property. From the old gas station property, that line goes away, that's the first lot line adjustment, that's the towns. And then, once that's done, then the lot line, this is the existing plan. Um, the actual land adjustment of the lot line is the, the new heavy line there. The dotted line is what it currently is, right? Sorry, I do have it here. So, this is the current lot line, this is the new lot line. Okay, I'm sorry, current lot line here, new lot line here, the little triangle piece. This is what it looks like right now, this is what it will look like. So, the town gets some.
But this zoning, i- i- of, of all, of all of this property, new, old, is all special civic?
Well, um. Currently, the town-owned property going around the triangle is special civic.
Yeah. Okay.
The triangle is village commercial. I will ask town council if we have to adjust that. Or if with the ownership, we can consider everything outside of the solid line, special civic, and everything inside of it, village commercial.
That would be the intent, the intent would be.
That would be the intent, yes.
That the land he acquires would all be zone village commercial.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the land that the town gets would be special civic, yeah.
Next question I have is, and, and I think I've asked this once before, the, the chunk of land down along the river, there's, there is an easement down there for a cross-country ski trail?
That's correct.
Does that come with any, uh, and also, is this the area where the well, where the pipes through the mountain go up?
Um, no, they, they terminate at the wastewater, down below the wastewater treatment down here.
What a treatment, which is, which is in another area, okay.
Yeah.
Is there any obligations that go with that easement on our part for maintenance of those trails?
No. No. And I, I would say that we, not this year, it's too late, but next year, we may wanna take the easement area. And extend the green belt all the way to Triple I Road, because right now, the green belt ends here. And the area in the easement is village commercial. So, we may wanna, just something to put on to do this, cause we're not gonna have the changes.
So, nothing, no town stuff over here, I hope there was, there's a.
It's all, it's all national for, or that's privately owned.
Yeah, that home.
Yeah, the home, and then there's another lot.
Adjacent to that.
Adjacent to that one, two lots, see.
Oh, yeah, got it.
Any problems with this? Carrie, you?
I don't, I just was gonna, this symbol, is it light, what is that? I don't see anything in the key about that.
There's nothing in the key, I don't know what it is. Is there another one? Uh. This is a water shut-off, so it must be a valve.
So, that would be the valve to the, going out, okay.
That probably to, yeah. Uh, probably to our effluent line.
Yeah.
And the, uh.
Yeah.
The swap in lot lines, does it in any way change their lot size to make their light size more traffic?
No, but it changes the, the setbacks.
A setback?
Uh, it changes the setbacks down here.
Where's down here?
Um, right here, because they're getting this much extra land, which pushes this twenty-foot setback out, right? Or vice, I'm sorry, vice versa, where am I here? Yes, so, here's their current lot line, yes, so they're, it pushes it out, yes.
What does that do to the area with this?
Allows, I'm sorry, this, um, setback, the new setback is here, see the twenty-foot building setback?
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Twenty-foot building setback.
Line to be abandoned, this is the line.
Right, so by pushing this line out, this line went further that way. Same thing here, they gave up, they moved it back, right? In this area, so they, they no longer have this little bump out, their twenty-foot setback is here now, so they actually gave up a little there. But, for the most part, Bill, it moves it out a little.
But, what about the disposition of the old, um, patch?
We don't use it anymore.
Okay, cause that gets, it pushes it further into their land at this point, is that just gonna be abandoned and?
Yes, it's gonna be abandoned.
I know, I know.
We've, we've taken, we haven't, we haven't moved the, the actual walls, but we've taken the building and put it over there.
Okay.
Th- th- this land is generally right now used for just storage, right, commercial storage of.
Yeah.
Materials for maintenance and the rest.
He entered a new lease, the same lease that he had with Godioso. He has entered that lease with Valley Property Management now.
Now, we're in the public meeting, so are there any, um, positive comments on this, yes?
Uh, I just have, I have two comments. One is that the point that Bill brought up about the zone. Cause now that you've changed the lot line, I don't, I'm not sure if that actually changes the zoning line automatically.
N- no, and we'll have to find out, are you okay with a, with me getting language from town council to adjust these zones? To that intent of their land is VC and the town's land is special civic?
Yeah, cause I think we, I think the board has to take action on that, and maybe we could do it in the March meeting to change the zoning.
Okay. Well, you don't change the zoning, it's gotta be voted on.
I know, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't have to, has to go to the town.
Yeah. Right, but what I'm saying is, we can come up with that language for your meeting next Tuesday.
Tues- right, okay.
And change the lot line. And change the lot line.
Yeah, 'cause I think when, when they move run.
Is, is he asking that as a condition?
No, he hasn't asked for it as a condition, but I would think that the town would want its land to be special civic.
Right.
Why? What difference it makes to the town?
It's just cleaner meter.
I'd like to get it all done at once.
Yeah, I'm just wondering with all the items regarding zoning on the calendar, whether putting another item, one just makes sense.
Is there a reason to not? Yeah. Oh, okay, I see what you mean.
If nobody's pushing.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's pushing.
You can, you can do it next year, I mean, you know. We can pass it right away and just let it, well, no, we can't pass it right away, we gotta wait to the end of the year again.
No, you can't. Right.
Yeah.
'Cause that would be an easy change, 'cause that, that happened with Moose Run, 'cause some of those lot lines went over indirectly.
Right. Well, it happened with the, with the golf clubhouse, too. We didn't change, remember, we didn't change the rec, we had that little piece of one of the lots.
Right, right, yeah.
When we did Moose Run, yeah, with the rec. Well, can, would you consider it, we'll, we'll have the language, and then if you think it's too complicated, we'll wait, and is that okay?
Sure.
Yeah.
Isn't that just the map?
Well, yeah, but you gotta have a warrant article that says change the map, and we gotta figure out what that language is.
Change it for...
And I have one other comment.
Yep.
I think the, uh, regulations call for the entire lots to be shown with the boundaries, and that doesn't show the special civic lot.
That's true.
I like this side of the table.
Someone escort that gentleman out, please.
And he refuses.
We're gonna, we're gonna call the police chief.
It's true.
Okay, I, I didn't wanna pull this card, but Ray is gonna force me. The lot that we're talking about is town-owned and
Town, it's special civic, it doesn't have a problem.
All of the private lot is shown on the map. Whatever you wanna do.
But don't you have a lot line there, too?
No, the lot line is between two town-owned parcels.
Yeah, didn't you merge the two lots?
We merged.
This is not recorded, right?
It will get recorded, there's a plat there to be signed.
Yeah.
But the two lots that are getting merged are both town-owned.
Yeah, no, but when, what the registry wants to...
Oh, the registry is gonna need, yes.
So they need the whole lot?
Um...
Or just the line affecting?
They, yes, they will, I'll have to, we'll have to do another Mylar. For the lot merger.
So, we're...
I'll make a deal with you, we'll get a Mylar for the lot merger that shows all of the lots in it, in their entirety, okay? For the lot merger.
Okay.
If, if we don't have to redo this plan and come back.
You sound like somebody who comes in here all the time, holy moly!
Exactly. Yeah, you, you gotta try being on this side of the table.
No thanks.
Especially when he's talking about fire apparatus.
Where, where is the line that is the, you're, you're talking about, there's lots here that are merged?
This isn't, this is the line that's getting merged, it's going away.
Okay, would this lot...
Oh, I'm sorry, no, the line, this assumes that the merger has already happened, but the current line goes off.
Right. Okay, but you wanna make this a combination, too?
That's right. Well, no, you need two separate votes. First, you do the merger of the two town lots together, then you do this.
Okay. Well, we don't have any plan for the merger of the two town lots together.
Because you don't need one, it's a, it's a minor lot line revision, it's taking out that one line, so you don't technically...
Okay, does everybody understand that lot line merger? Any negative comments? Okay.
Do you have any?
No, I just wanna make sure everybody understands, 'cause it's complicated, 'cause you're trying to do two things here. All right, um... Can I have a motion to accept the merging of the two town lots that's not shown on this plan?
Correct. Does everyone know the lot line that we're talking about?
I'll second that. Perfectly clear motion.
This is the lot line that we're referring to right here. Okay. That will go away, and this lot will be merged with
This lot, yeah.
this little lot here where the gas station used to be.
Right.
That's the lot line.
It's a, it's just an elimination of a lot line, a common lot line.
It's an elimination of one common lot line to create one lot from two.
And those are all, those two are sp- are special civic?
That's all set. No, one of them is village commercial and one is special civic.
Oh.
Because the gas station lot was never changed from village commercial to special civic.
That was.
Well, we may sell it off again. Well, that's, that's the new.
Maybe, we don't have anybody...
'Cause we have all of our trash there now.
Well...
And we have our, we have our public works garage on part of that land.
But, it's, you know.
And, and you need an act of hazard to get the fire, uh, garbage truck out.
So, you're going to have one lot that's in two different zones now?
Well, but we're gonna address, like Ray said, we're gonna talk about that on Tuesday. Have language to
Okay.
change the town land to special civic and then...
Okay, is it? Is it, um, allowed that a single lot can be zoned in, with two different zones? That's not a requirement?
Yeah, that's not, the, the lot lines are not the controlling
Okay.
factor for zoning.
All right, any further discussion or questions, or? All right, um, then I guess we'll call for a vote all in favor of, uh, accepting the application for the, um, merger of the two lots in question, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? No, okay. But, uh...
So now there's one lot.
Passes. So now we have one lot, and we have a second application here for a lot line adjustment with an adjoining property for the purposes of, I guess, uh, obtaining an easement across the property along the river and for straightening out other lot lines, for simplification of the lot, I guess. And has everybody had a chance to look at that plan and see what's going on here?
I'll make a motion to accept that lot line adjustment.
Should we get some comments from the public?
Okay, with me, you're...
Any comments in, uh, favor of the application? Any comments against? Okay, we'll take the, uh...
I'll make a motion to accept the lot line adjustment.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Does this also involve two different zones as well, or is, uh, it does now, doesn't it?
It does, because currently, this is VC.
Right.
Right.
And this is special civic. So when you put that line in, this little piece right here will be VC, town-owned and village commercial.
So that will be handled in the same fashion, at the same time?
In the same fashion, I'll, what I'm gonna ask is that town council come up with language to make this village commercial and all of this special civic.
And you now have the language which we were waiting for.
For the easements, yeah.
The easements.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? So we'll bring if you vote all those in favor of approving the application of the town for the lot line adjustment, uh, with the Waterville Company Incorporated. Uh, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So we have it approved.
I was forcing the horses.
It was only the fifth time we talked about it.
There's not much left. Okay.
Mark, you have two others here, do you?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And committee reports update on the pedestrian village study?
Yeah, um, Mark Kane has indicated that he'll have the final project to the planning board for review by next week. I'm assuming towards the middle of the week. Um, I'm not sure what format that will be in, I think in some sort of Dropbox type thing like we did last time. Um, but we do need to establish when the planning board would like to have that final public presentation of terms about the, uh, first weekend of the Mass vacation week. If that is still, um, cohesive with everybody, we need to kinda get nailed down a date and time for the SE group to be able to plan. Um, you know, we typically try to go for Fridays, Saturdays, when the most people will be around both residential, residents and second homeowners.
What week is it?
It's that one.
Before September 12th, is it?
Residents. Um, it's around there, man.
Fourteenth is a Saturday.
Yeah, twelve.
Fourteen.
Yeah, 'cause ours starts Saturday, the twenty-first, so theirs will start Saturday before.
Right, it's before. So I assume, well, I don't know, Friday the thirteenth, we wanna look at that, or we, I guess we could look at... I don't know, we won't look at Sunday or Monday, 'cause I know there's the Ray Center function on that Saturday that we wouldn't wanna interfere with. But it's, I think...
But Monday's President's Day, so that might be...
Yeah, it might be good, perhaps second homeowners who are up for a long weekend would be here on the Monday.
All I can say, the weather contingent, because if a storm decides to come in, then people are gonna split.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Is that the end of their vacation?
No, that's the beginning.
That's the beginning.
That's the beginning.
What day is that?
The sixteenth, President's Day, February sixteenth.
So Monday.
When is the, uh, when is the Super Bowl this year?
Boo.
It's the first weekend, I think.
I think it's either the first or the eighth.
Which of the eighth.
I thought it was in February, I'm sure.
Maybe the first of February.
Yeah.
I always wanna do it in there.
But that's just important.
Yeah, definitely.
Sure, roll that date.
Well, what if you did Sunday afternoon at four, or five?
I would, I would think, that would be better.
Yeah, that's better than Monday.
Which, they're gonna, that's better than Monday, 'cause if they're gonna leave, they're gonna leave Monday morning.
Yeah.
As long as that's not the Super Bowl, you're all right.
Yeah. Unless the path, the paths still be flying in it?
Doesn't, even, regardless of who plays, you don't wanna compete with them.
No.
It's still a Super Bowl.
Okay.
So that's the, uh...
February fifteenth?
Fifteenth. Sunday, February fifteenth, is that the... Four o'clock, five o'clock, what time does the mountain close?
Four.
Four.
So say, six, four, five, six, what time?
Four or five, I think is good. Six is too late, I think, it might be.
Yeah, it's too late, yes.
So five o'clock, when the mic can close?
I need to go four thirty.
Yeah.
Four thirty?
Yeah.
Okay.
People don't always stay till the very end up on the hill, so...
Yeah, all right, so four thirty on Sunday the fifteenth.
Yeah.
And we look at, um, where?
Well, I prefer the conference center if we could, because if they're, if they don't have an event in there, because our rec department is very busy during the holiday weekends especially. So they probably have stuff planned for the fifteenth. I mean, I can check, but... And if we're opening it up and hoping that the whole community will come, we may want a slightly larger than normal venue. So if we could check the conference center availability?
Yeah, I'll have to, I don't think it's gonna go. Would we assume like an hour and a half, rather than by six? Is that safe?
Well, yeah, I, I, you know, I, my advice always would be, they should plan on the presentation, it's no more than about thirty, thirty-five minutes.
Right, and questions, yeah, agreed.
I mean, with questions, they can go more than that, they can go as long as you want with questions, but you're gonna lose people, right?
Right.
Right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure they would have it, so I can, um, make sure that that works for the SE group.
Okay.
And see if the conference center is available.
Sure, this is it.
See if the conference center is available. If not, we'll make arrangements at the rec if we have to, but...
Would we look at changing the date, should we establish a snow date, a weather date as a fallback?
Well, that might be Monday as a fallback.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so everything's ending at three at the rec.
Okay.
Uh, comedian Bob Marley is at the conference center on February fifteenth.
Okay, so, let's do it at the, let's do it at the multipurpose room.
That's, that's it. What, what time, what time is, is that evening?
Eight o'clock, probably, something like that.
Probably, um... Six, Laura's open at six, Shola's at seven.
Six.
Wow.
Well, we'll be done by six, and that'll be the hard cutoff.
Yeah.
All right, so not the conference center and rec?
Yeah, we'll do it at the rec pub, uh, at the rec multipurpose room and be done by six.
Cool.
'Cause I don't know, I don't know if Brooke has, is gonna try to do something different, or if our current schedule is all she has really planned.
Right.
But let me check with her and I'll get back to Wendy.
Okay.
And we'll email you if there's any changes. Okay?
What are, what are the, uh, physical deliverables from this report?
A document, uh, some electronic maps.
One, one...
Oh, no, I, I don't know the exact number that we put in there, but there'll be multiple copies of the report.
No, 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 of course I'll take one home, but...
Not, no, right, right.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll, and we'll have electronic, you know, we'll have PDF copies that we can distribute to everybody.
Right, okay. Okay.
And we can print whatever else we need to, need to here. But there will be maps and there will be booklets that they will owe us.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what the physical ones, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, question, question on the master plan, is that, that's all been incorporated and revised? Can we get copies of the, the new master plan? Where we added the wetlands, that was the only change we made.
Um, yeah, we can go through those, right, the addition of that page of the executive summary. Yeah, we can, we can get you new copies.
Is the master plan one of the documents, the updated copy that's listed on the town website?
Yes, master plan's on there.
I, I don't know that the most recent update is.
Well, not the, not the one with the wetlands, but yes, when we update it, it, it is on there and we'll need to
Not the, we have them given a copy.
Right. Got an updated copy, the most up-to-date copy should be on that website.
Put the updated copy. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it should be, right, okay.
The other, the other thing that I thought of as we were talking here, I know we have all struggled with the numbering system. We tried to do the numbering system to fit into a single town regulation volume with the different chapters being the first number and all that. I've asked town council if we can simply administratively take those out and go back to the old numbering system, and she said no. It is an actual vote, because we've been using that numbering system in town votes, right? Is it okay if I ask her what, how complicated the language is to take that numbering system out and go back to the old articles and paragraphs and all of that?
Something that's automatic.
Something that, well, that's more automatic for Sharon and that is easier probably to understand.
Yeah.
It, it, the issue is that from a maintenance perspective, it's difficult, the way it's now done.
Yes.
Yeah, because you renumber everything going down.
I know, it's very difficult to insert items.
Yes, and she, she, Sharon and I had the conversation yesterday, because she's looking at putting in a new definition and it screws up all the numbers and, so if we can just, if we can go back to the old way, it was an experiment, it didn't work, and... But I know that it's gonna have to be some kind of question, so if it's all right with you, I'll let you know on Tuesday what the language...
Yeah. You need a motion on that?
Um, no, I, I'll just bring language and then you can decide whether to move it forward to the public hearing.
On Tuesday.
On Tuesday, yeah, okay? Thank you.
If we're gonna make that change, I, it'd be nice if we could keep the, the fact... If we're gonna make that change, I, it'd be nice if we could keep the, the fact that every line has an individual number. You know, like on the minutes, like, you know, like, if we could keep that column on the left-hand side, not, not invisible, but it helps
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I think that is an administrative.
to be identifying, where in the heck name are you talking about it?
Yeah, I don't think there's a problem with that. I don't think there's a problem with that. That, that is an administrative thing that you put in there.
You know, in line one thousand something. Right.
Whatever shows up on the website or when we hand them out, they don't have those numbers, so.
Right. No, right, but it helps to find the number.
But just for reference, yeah.
Yeah, it's for reference.
Right, you gotta find where people are.
My kids here.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do that though, um, if, if anybody, if anything gets posted on the, um, email or website or anything like that,
Yeah.
it should be a PDF file, because otherwise the, the numbers won't be the same.
Yes. That's great.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
So you're getting away from that, the three is the, uh?
Three point four point, yes, we're getting rid of that. That's what I'm gonna ask her, how do you do that?
We're gonna get rid of three?
Eleven, two point, three point.
So all the documents would change and the master plan is, isn't that one or something?
Well, but you control the master plan. The, the only thing that needs to be voted on by the town is the zoning one. You control every other document, so.
Yeah. Cause we, cause we would probably wanna change those, cause the subdivision is two or something and master plan's one, okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sorry that.
Anything else? I'm just gonna recap the dates we got. We got one thirteen at eight o'clock for the working season. We got one twenty-nine at eight o'clock for the, uh, zoning changes and that's a one-shot deal. And we've got, uh, two fifteen at four thirty at the rec.
At the rec center or the conference?
Four o'clock.
At the rec. Remember, Bob Marley is at the conference center.
We moved to the rec.
Four, four o'clock or four thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
Four thirty, did I say four? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I got four thirty written.
You said four thirty.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
Oh, I just had, this was just a quick communication. The North Country Council, uh, did send along, there are packets upstairs as well. This is a, their new plan for New Hampshire's North Country that was published in November. So it is on their website with additional information as well.
What do they call that thing on the cover? A word glass or something?
Those word.
A word, oh, yeah.
Yeah. Mark, I thought Mark the name.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Is that what they call it, a word glass?
Uh, graphic?
Word graph.
Word graphic, it's mountains, I mean, it's, it's everything that's Waterville right there too.
It was, it was something in. Okay, there's a, um, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion for adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.